Hello Wakefield, good evening. Welcome to our town council meeting of September 12th, 2022. I call this meeting to order and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And looking at attendance, I've got my entire council here today. Everyone, we have seven, all seven of us are here. Item number four, public engagement. Clerk Sherry Dalton, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
I do not have anybody tonight signed up for public comment.
Okay, great. Then we will move on. And our chief and deputy, deputy chief just walked in, so we're at item five.
Oh, we are.
Yeah. Should, should we actually, yeah, let's, we're gonna do, is that okay? We're gonna do fire first.
Oh, sure, they're next.
No, I didn't know about.
Oh, no, no, that's fine.
Okay. Sorry. No, you guys, it's your turn. Sorry about that. Hello, chief and deputy chief, thank you so much for coming. You've had a very busy couple of months in Wakefield, and so I had asked to invite you here to just tell us all about the great work you and your department are doing and any way that we can support you. So, please go ahead.
It's always nice to be thought of and thanks for inviting us here. You know, we have had a very busy summer. July was, was notable for the number of car accidents that we had, a series of very serious car accidents. And we got through that and then the drought got really bad and extremely severe, whatever they use it for a scale. And there's no, I mean, there's no really great time to fight fires, but you know, either the middle of the winter is not a great, particularly great time to fight them, but I'll tell you, a hot, August, hot, humid August and then mid 90s, a very high humidity is, it's definitely not our first choice. But you know, you don't, you go to work every day and you don't, you don't, you don't get too much say in that and you just respond accordingly. And we had two very serious structure fires in August. Unfortunately, they displaced two families in Wakefield. And, and then kinda in between, sandwiched in between the two structure fires, the drought finally affected our area in terms of outside, outside fires. And Breakhart experienced the largest fire I, I can recall since getting on the fire department, by far. I mean, I can recall having maybe a 15 or a 20 acre fire a long time ago, but to have a Toulouse 80 acres inside of six or seven days is quite a, that's quite a thing to be a part of, you know? And before I say too much more, I need to remind everybody that Breakhart is, is almost completely in Saugus. So Saugus deserves a ton of credit for pulling together all the, you know, really, they were there every day, you know? So they were the backbone of the firefighting effort and I certainly don't want that to go unnoticed. We were happy to do our part and assist whenever we were asked for and we did. I'm proud of the fact that probably of all the mutual aid partners that Saugus had, with the exception of DCR, I believe we supplied the most mutual aid to Saugus. I was pretty, pretty proud of that. And the troops worked very hard in the woods and I was, I'm sure deputy chief, my concern was, were very concerned because of the weather conditions that some, something, someone's gonna have heat stroke or, or a gaucho bit of tree was gonna fall on somebody and, you know, so forth. But we certainly appreciate being, you know, invited here. And deputy, we handled both the structure fires that we had in August because I was, one time I was at the academy with one of our new recruits who's since started, John Carano, and he was actually being, walking across the stage, I believe, at about the same time the first alarm was struck. So that took care of the August 5th fire on Eastern Ave. And the other fire, I was on vacation. So it's very nice as a chief of the department to know that I can go on vacation and I can go off and attend a ceremony and have the deputy and all the other members of the department there to take care of business if something goes wrong. Firefighting is very much a team sport, so to speak, and it just, it's a nice feeling to have as chief.
There's a little one talking. Go ahead, Depp.
To reiterate what the chief said, thank you so much for having us. The heat did take a toll on the department. It's the driest summer on record for 100 years. And it was, the fires were tough, Breakhart was tough, but you know, the department members are fantastic, they really are. And you really have to worry about different things. You know, the layman looks at putting, you know, the wet stuff on the red stuff, but there's a lot more that goes, goes with it. And first and foremost, as I said before, is our people are the priority. Obviously, the townspeople that we're protecting, but our, the men and women of the fire department. We really have to be careful, the chief and I have to operate and run the fires, but the system of mutual aid kicks in and as advertised, it's mutual. You know, they give aid, we give aid back and it really helps out. When our full first alarm assignment is committed, which happens very quickly, especially in the heat, you know, our neighbors come in and really, they help us out a lot and we do the same for them. But it's been a spectacular summer for, for emergencies.
Was there a particular question that you wanted to ask?
Well, I, I wanted to just thank you and please carry on our thanks to the entire department because I think all of us are aware of what a tough summer and what a dry summer it was. And you know, everyone's impacted whether they live on the, on the street, on, on a street where one of the structural damages were or couldn't go to Breakhart for a while. So we know that the whole entire department was working on it. And I will open it up and I saw Councilor Dubrowski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Chief and Deputy Chief. I'll say, having been at Breakhart several times, you know, at that command center that had set up there, I was so proud to see our Wakefield trucks there regularly. Not only that, but in talking with leadership at Saugus, they were incredibly thankful for the, the support that Wakefield in particular provided throughout. And so seeing that presence there, you know, and just knowing that we were actively involved and knowing how if that fire continued to spread, you know, it was, you know, part of Breakhart is in Wakefield, you know, certainly. And looking at that map and I think it was, what it ended up being, I think, seven fires that then became six different kind of like.
Someone burned into each other.
Yeah, exactly, burning into each other. Thinking about that and also what could have been had it, had it progressed even further too. I just, I just, I take my hat off to the entire department because the entire department did a phenomenal job and it was noticed by everyone, talking with DCR, talking with Saugus, talking with other departments, other mutual aid that was there. Everyone was talking about the important role that Wakefield played in that. So thank you, thank you for your leadership and thank the department for, for that commitment.
It was a very impressive display of mutual aid that was there.
It was incredible.
You go around the bend and you see a Bloxborough tanker, you know, Topsfield, Wenham, you know, there was dozens of communities in there. And everybody worked well together. Saugus has always been a very good mutual aid partner for us and we were very happy to, you know, be able to assist them when they needed it. And fortunately, no one was hurt, which is, which is sometimes hard to do, especially in those weather conditions and given the fact that the fire had burned in 18 inches into the ground. And there was a potential there for, a very high potential for trees to collapse and fall over. The root systems of a lot of those trees don't, do not get out very far. And the ground fire had in fact destroyed the root systems of hundreds of trees. And it just didn't take much for one of them to go over. I'm sure the first significant windstorm that we had this fall, if you go walking through Breakhart, they're gonna, they'll be out there with chainsaws and every other thing trying to clear the roads and so forth.
I think your presentation also highlights just the diversity of the challenges that you face because we're talking about, you know, forest fires, we're talking about automobile accidents, we're talking about house fires, you know, and so you never know what, what the next, the next call is going to bring, but you've, your entire department has done a phenomenal job this summer under very challenging circumstances, so thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Smith Calvin?
Thank you. Again, thank you both. I guess I have a question, given the drought and I think what we saw is, you know, changes in the climate are certainly hitting New England like they're hitting other parts of the country. I mean, do you see any changes if this keeps up, these kinds of droughts? Are there changes in how we should be, do we permit, you know, leaves being burned in the yards, things like that? Like in terms of equipment, in terms of advice, how do you see things changing?
Well, I mean, it's certainly a concern when we have a severe drought condition that, you know, the fact the state did take action and limited outside fires in the state parks and so forth, which everyone was pretty happy with because the, the amount of state resources that were tied up during that, that period was kind of alarming. And it was at the point where if they had many more fires, they would have, would have been overwhelmed.
Do we, do we have, what is our time period for people like brush burning?
Open burning season is January 15th to me.
It's spring, winter then, okay.
Yeah. It's, and it's only for like brush, no leaves or anything like that.
Okay.
We're trying to get people to use the pit. I mean, it's a very reasonable pit fee permit, $25 is awesome.
That's a good point, so we should be encouraging people to use that.
And great hours at the pit. Maybe we've worked on that.
We have the phenomenal extended hours, the most hours we've ever had at the pit.
I'm not, I'm not sure, like, I've talked to neighbors on my street and they'd be like, you know, oh, we missed the outside, you know, curb pickup. It's like, well, you know, you can get a pit permit. You might wanna think about advertising exactly how you go about doing that.
Okay.
Or maybe make it, I'm, I'm gonna embarrass myself here, but maybe you could, you could make it online, it probably already is online.
Yeah, but those are the kinds of things I'm wondering, like, from your perspective, what can we do to help kind of encourage different behavior or, you know, have people prepare, things like that?
I mean, I think the town does a good job with the website structure now and the way they get the information out. I think our website needs to be enhanced. We're so busy, but IT is so busy, we're, we're working on that, but we need an enhanced website, more user friendly, where people can come, look, somewhat what you guys are doing, I mean, we need that. I go around, check the other cities and towns and some of them are fabulous, I'd like to mimic them, but we'll go to IT, they're fantastic to help out, but we need some more resources. That's one way.
That's a great.
The pit helped settle up, helped me out last week with the extended hours, I'll tell you that.
Thank you so much for all you do.
That's a great, as we start budget season again in January, that's, that's something easy we can do. Counselor Chines?
Thank you. And, and thank you both for the update for your work, but also I really appreciate chief you recognizing the team as well. You know, the, the choreography that goes into responding to a situation, not just as large as Breakhart, but even some of the structural fires, the accidents that we've had is, is clear. And, you know, you both do a great job as leaders, but your, your entire department and our surrounding communities are great helps. I did have a question, actually a little bit apart from sort of the fire piece, you know, we've talked before that, you know, a lot of the calls you get are actually medical emergencies. And just curious, as you look back over the last, you know, 12 months of, of medical calls between, you know, kind of COVID, COVID abating to some extent between, you know, the hot summer months, have there been any trends or patterns that you've seen in, in some of the medical emergencies that your departments responded to?
Well, during the height of COVID, our calls actually had a slight decrease because honestly, I think some people were afraid to, to go, you know, because they had, they didn't have COVID, they had something else wrong with them and they were, they were hesitant to go, go to the hospital. That's definitely recovered, you know, so we've gotten all those calls back. COVID took a toll on first responders, especially EMT, ambulance companies and all that. And they're struggling to provide enough units to meet the demand, you know? So I think that's a consequence of, that certainly caused with the COVID. And I know in the past, there's been some discussion from the state about maybe doing something to bolster the, that particular industry. And that was certainly, it sounds like a good idea to me, you know? But I would say that we've recovered from any lull that we experienced in emergency responses. And in fact, we're exactly the opposite, we're, we're actually starting to feel the effects of the, of the expansion in town and then new projects. And obviously, that's gonna continue to happen as, as the projects get completed and occupied and so forth. But that's gonna be a challenge for the department and I'm sure the police department as well, you know, as, as time goes on. So, Danny, it's your question, I'm sorry if.
It does. The, the other part of it, I'm curious and thinking about some of the, the work that we did and some of the, the, the public kind of communication we did around some of the cooling centers this summer. You know, did, did you see any impact in terms of calls that you otherwise would have received in terms of heat related issues, particularly among the elderly or any, any impact that, you know, you observed just again in terms of the medical calls coming in this summer?
We've definitely experienced problems, particularly with the elderly trying to deal with the heat. And he's not here, but Tom Walsh actually was the person that was instrumental in getting the, the cooling centers open, or at least the library. I know we, we were thinking about using the public safety building, but that's probably not a good idea right now.
It's a tough time to bring people into the building.
So, and, and you know, and I would be remiss if I didn't give Tom his due as well. Mutual aid comes in many forms, from outside the town and inside the town and the police department and fire and certainly emergency management, DPW, school department, you know, they were involved when, believe it or not, they were involved with Breakhart because we had to use Walsh Field to, to land the helicopter. That was another thing that, you know, we never had before. We used to make jokes like 15 years ago, you know, we call for an airstrike, you know, and all that. And, you know, it was just making light of the situation and here we are. I mean, I've seen them train with helicopters and, and baskets, but to actually see him do 100, you know, flyovers and dump water on fire, I mean, that, that's a pretty substantial demonstration of, of interagency cooperation, you know?
27 years I haven't landed a Blackhawk helicopter, but we did it for a while. It was great teamwork. But the, the heat put a lot of stress on everybody, the townspeople, you know, our runs are up, we're very, very busy with medicals. Medical is spread out right now, as the chief said EMS is spread thin. So we have to get to our calls even quicker sometimes because, you know, we're first to end oftentimes, our engine companies and our personnel. It's just the way it is, it's, it's a tough industry right now and the heat is providing more emergencies. And I'll tell you what, as you all know, the building within town, we're, we're everywhere because of the expansion in town and it's getting busier and busier. We go a lot more than we did when I got on 15, 1800 runs, now up over 4,000. So it's busy.
Well, again, thank you very much for, for everything you do and every, the job everyone does in the department.
Thanks.
I'm gonna do Counselor Vincent and then Counselor Dennehy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief, Deputy Chief, I think it's really important to highlight that while you dealt with the two house fires and Breakhart reservation during August, you responded to 369 emergency incidents in the month of August, 250 of which were emergency medical and motor vehicle accident responses. That's an average of over 12 a day that you guys are responding to where, and you have to be there as quickly as possible. As you indicated, deputy, that's causing an effect with your personnel in order to respond to these number of incidents.
They have to be on point 24/7, excuse me, and again, 369 runs during that high heat period, it's taxing your apparatus. I mean, there's a whole myriad of things that are going on and the people are fantastic, our officers, our firefighters, they're great, but it could be taxing, but they got the job done.
And the fire department puts together a month, a monthly report, which I've been reading and I think it would be good if it was up on the town website, the fire department website, so folks in town could read the incredible work that you guys are doing every month. And the chief does a very good job with synopsizing this. It's very readable, it's very understandable and certainly incredibly informative.
Yeah, it's up on our website, I believe, Chief.
It is definitely on the tablet.
It's just tough to get to it, but the chief does a fantastic job with that narrative every month.
The department's website, it's a work in progress, we're working on that.
Yeah, we work on that, but I heard from our, our comms director that it is on our website, so we'll just highlight it, maybe, maybe September's a good time to highlight this monthly report. Thank you, Counselor Vincent. Counselor Dennehy?
I want to thank Counselor Butt for inviting you in so we can thank you for all the work that you do and I think you do a tremendous job and, and you've had a lot of very tough situations over the last couple of years that you've had to be dealing with. One thing that I want to say is that with, with all of the development that we are seeing and the new thing, new residences being created, is that I think that we just want to make sure that we are mindful of funding, of, of funding the fire department and police department as we, as our town grows, because that's gonna be, you know, your, your record of being so quick to respond and doing such an incredible job is, we don't want to hinder that in any way.
We're certainly very appreciative of the fact that we're, we have the extra firefighter per shift under the safer grant. That's made a significant difference and I think it's made anybody, that firefighter is assigned to the ladder company. And so we went from two, a two-member ladder company to a three-member and that's huge. That makes a huge difference in terms of their safety and the public safety.
Well, and it's great that we have such a well-run town that we can afford those things. I remember when, way back in 2008 with PTSD that I have, when I was on finance committee, we were talking about, you know, closing, I remember Greenwood, there was talk of closing Greenwood Station and then Melrose Highlands was gonna close their station and, you know, I live right in between the two of them. So for me, it was, it was a little frightening. So I'm glad that we're not having those conversations.
You know, that was the first, I think that was the first meeting we ever had, Steve.
That was, yeah. It was a great time to be thrown into the.
Yeah.
We made a work though.
Yeah.
How are you gonna, how are you gonna operate without a Greenwood fire station? I'm like, oh.
Yeah.
We did.
And well, just, that was 2008 and then fast forward to 2017 and one of Counselor Dubrowski's and I early vote was getting the new fire truck. So, you know, there is a commitment from the town council of, you know, just supporting all the great work you do. Just, anyone else need to say anything? And then let me, let me go to Counselor Dubrowski and then Steve.
I just wanted to ask quickly, we're talking a lot about the new development and obviously a lot more units are still yet to come online that haven't yet. I know for our census, we, we've, I think gained about 2,000 people are there about 2010 to 2020 and that's not including the additional units that we'll have, you know, in the month and the next couple of years. Where's your comfort level, one with the, the current staffing levels and where do you see that going? And then along with that, because a lot, a lot of the development that we're seeing now is, you know, more, more vertical, where, where's your comfort level with the, the equipment, you know, ladder trucks, apparatus that you currently have, understanding that you'll be, you know, we've added stories on, on Foundry, for instance, you know, we've gone up and, and are we at a good place? Are you comfortable with where we are or where do we need to be?
I think the, the addition of the, the additional member on the ladder truck was huge, hugely significant to the department. I think that we need to keep our eye on emergency calls and the volume. And if it continues to increase, I think we're at the point now where we're gonna see 4,000 calls a year regularly. We just kinda like tapped it last year and it's gonna be more than a tap this year. I, I think we need to, yeah, the town definitely needs to keep its eye. I mean, we, if, it depends on where the development is, if they continue to build large-scale development, it's not out of the question in the future. I'm not saying how far into the future. That, we could be looking at a third station with another engine company, you know? If I didn't say that, I think half the people in this room would be looking at me like, you know, what are you doing? I, I can see that, I don't think that's out of the question, let's put it that way. But how long it takes for us to get to that point, it depends entirely on how much development there is, how our run count is affected by it and so forth.
I just don't feel like we, to my understanding, I don't know that we have ratios of population to, you know, number of firefighters, for instance. You know, is there like a formula basically? Because obviously our, our, the population is, is growing, but are we kind of keeping pace with that? And I know we've done historically, but I don't know that we necessarily have like a methodology we use for police or fire or any of those, or teachers for that matter, you know, just.
There are national standards and there are, there is a methodology. It's not always accepted because it's usually there are cuts, not adding. And again, we can't thank the board and administrator mayor enough. I mean, it's huge that we got up to what we're at, 55, you know, three on the ladder truck all the time, but it's about response time. So again, you can be spread out. So the Audubon Road area and all the construction on Salem Street, never ending, the buildings, the infrastructure they've put up down there, it's a six-minute run, okay? So we're primarily two to three minutes. You can time it every which way to Sunday, it's six minutes, other than our command car. Our command car is first out the gate, doesn't have capabilities of water or anything else, it's the shift command of the captain. The apparatus is six minutes cold, always has been. You get down there, you get a box assignment or a house fire somewhere else, we're getting a lot more instances of multiple runs at the same time. And with the growth, the infrastructure, our ladder trucks are gonna reach, they only go 100 feet, so you know, you can't get them any bigger than that. A lot of wood frame, you know, not steel structures anymore, it's wood frame, it's protected with sprinklers, but the game has changed and as the chief said, we have to keep a close eye on things. We are getting spread thinner EMS, we've kicked that around before. There are a lot of things to, to keep in mind. We're getting it done now, for now, but the town is growing, or the city is growing.
Town, borough town. Steve?
I just wanted to thank both of you and the work of the department and it's, you know, these fires are tragic and, but it is amazing to go there and see how it's choreographed. The great word that Counselor Chines had, everybody knew, knows their role, everybody does their job, from taking care of the distraught homeowner to making sure the fire is out, doesn't spread to neighbors, that people are safe, to keeping the companies that are trying to maybe sell their wares to the homeowners away from them at the scene, to the DPW people showing up to make sure there's plenty of water, gas and light department there, like that, to make sure they shut off the gas or electricity. Doesn't happen in other communities that don't have that relationship. They're waiting for National Grid or Boston Gas or wherever, it's just not, not the same. The police there doing their job, it is just amazing to see and it was amazing how you gentlemen, on those very hot days, or one of the tuest hot days, you have these hot fires, moving the shifts in and out, misting stations set up for them by Cataldo ambulance, the guys are going in, the firefighters are going in, coming out, making sure people are safe. It really is a, is a great job and I'm grateful to be, you know, on the same team as you guys and I know the community and so thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you. Chairman, Counselor McLean.
Not chairman. Just something you said, just raised a question in my mind, you said 100 feet on the ladders. So would we potentially have a problem with some of the taller buildings that we have in town if?
We kind of rely heavily on engineering in the buildings. In other words, the building's protection, protective systems would compensate for that. It's extremely rare for us to take someone down over an aerial ladder. It's not the preferred way to do it, it's not the safest way to do it. We're gonna use the building's interior stairwells and we're gonna use the STAM pipe systems and sprinkle systems to help us get the job done. So that would be a last resort initially anyway and we're all. would be a last resort initially anyway, and we're only talking about the sixth or seventh floor, if you can get the ladder truck close enough anyway. And we're already beyond that in a number of buildings.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Well, thank you both so much for coming in. I just, we also did invite Tom Walsh, but he couldn't make it tonight. He will come to a future meeting, because I think what's been echoed, it really is a coordination between public safety, including police, fire, and, and Tom and all that he does. But again, from, from all of us, just deep appreciation, please carry it on to your team in any way, you know, when you know that you could use something, all of us are available, and Steve as well. But thank you so much.
I was actually remiss in not mentioning the light department. Thank you, Steve, because they're extremely, they come in very, very, very handy. They're excellent mutual aid partners, internal mutual aid partners.
That's great. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your support. Thank you very much.
Great guy.
Great night.
Item six, approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the August 1st, 2022 town council meeting minutes?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Great. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, Sherry? Great, thank you. Item seven, appointments.
Madam Chair, if I might, could, could we maybe move to eight?
Let's do it.
Eighteen, so.
That is, that is great. Let's go to item eight, licenses.
As much as they, I'm sure they want to stay here for the whole meeting.
No, but.
We were going to be really fast, but this, this will be great. So, if you could introduce
yourself and tell us why you're in front of us today, that would be great.
Sure, I'm Jen McDonald. I'm your communications manager.
And hi, I'm Erin Coquindat, the Community Economics Development Director.
We have some upcoming events that we want to tell you about. So, Town Day is happening on October 8th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. And if you all remember the Fall in Love with Wakefield Fest that happened last October, it's kind of Fall Fest 2.0. I got tremendous positive feedback from that event, from both people who were there as guests and exhibitors. It was a really great, friendly, positive vibe there. So, we want to take what everybody loved, incorporate constructive criticism, and do Town Day on the Common. So, one of the biggest pieces of constructive feedback that we got was that, so this happened in and around the Civic Center last year, and we did close Main Street, and it caused a lot of traffic considerations. So, knowing that we have a beautiful Town Common up the street, we're going to shift everything, and this one's going to be on the Common. So what are we going to have? Okay, so last year, it was incredibly difficult to get food vendors. There were staffing shortages, a lot of restaurants aren't set up to pick up and, you know, move their kitchen over. But this day, we have local favorites, Laurie's 909, Charlie's on Main, the MWRA Water Truck, which is the Mass Water Resource Authority that I think you all have talked about. You literally, it's a truck, you go up, you fill your water bottles on the spouts. We reserved it. And there'll be some fair food too through Newton's Concession, so fried dough, hot dogs, that, that stuff too. We'll have a live band there, the Wakefield School of Rock, and if you went last year to Fall Fest, they were the young adults, the students.
My God, they were incredible.
They were fantastic. So you'll be very impressed. They're going to do a set, and then we'll have a DJ when they're not playing. We're having a magician, face painters, fun and games, and there, Church Street will be a touch of truck showcase, where you can, kids can check out public safety vehicles and construction vehicles and that kind of thing. New this year is a cornhole tournament. There will be prizes. So registration link will come out when we put the formal announcement out in a couple of days. There'll be live demonstrations, you can do Tai Chi, you can do yoga, you can take a fencing class, and there'll be toddler soccer class as well. For exhibitors, we'll have any municipal boards that want to come, local nonprofits that service Wakefield, and any small business or artisans that are Wakefield-based. The Health Department is going to have a flu clinic. Again, if you want to register your appointment, that'll be coming out later this week. And Steve and I just heard that the consultants from the Wakefield Memorial High School Project are going to be available, so residents can come, check out some schematics, and ask questions. And then pending approval tonight, which is why I wanted to make sure you knew what the event was, there could be a Beer Garden hosted by Idle Hands. They were at our event last fall, it was successful, we didn't have any issues. And then we brought them on last fall because they had a standalone event on the Common the month prior. They did an Oktoberfest. So they're familiar with the area, and they've worked with us before. And just, I want to make clear, because I know you always ask, we have incorporated public safety, public works, and the Health Department in all our planning meetings, and we actually just met with them on Friday. So to learn more, I wanted to make sure I knew the outcome of tonight's event before I put out a schedule of events, but you can right now go to wakefield MA.us/TownDay2022 if you're interested in being an exhibitor. There's a form there, and some rudimentary information about Town Day already. And finally, I just wanted to give a special thanks to the Wakefield Lynn Field Chamber of Commerce. Their contact network is expansive, they have been so great in helping us secure vendors. So I just wanted to give a thank you to John and Francie. They've been a really great partner in this.
Awesome.
So we, we're going to give a little update on the Travel and Tourism Grant that Erin told you about before, but I just wanted to pause. If anybody has Town Day questions, I'd be happy to field them.
As I say, we did meet with the Police Department, making sure everything is segregated in the, I'm going to call it a food court area, because it's going to have, you know, pizza and bratwurst, I, I said hot dogs, I've been pushing for bratwurst because it's in October.
Laurie's is doing bratwurst, I think.
Laurie's 909, who does a great job. And I will say that we did reach out to some of the Wakefield restaurants, whether they wanted to handle a, a Beer Garden first, and they just don't have the staff to do it right now, so. But we are still, you know, we're trying to bring other people in to take some of the other spots. And Reading just had a very successful day like this a few weeks ago, so I think it'll be really work out well, and there'll be, you know, plenty of food, plenty of different drinks and what have you. So it'll be a great family day, like we had last time.
Did you have your hand up, Councilor Dennehy?
I did. I think that, I think that Councilor Smith-Galvin was before me. You go ahead. Oh, I caught your eye. Yeah, I think, I just want to say, it's like, last year, it was so fantastic. It was a great event, and it was nice, it was all ages. It was all ages, it was fun, it was not like overly like congested. So I think it's great. I think it's really exciting with Idle Hands. Now, the only thing is, I also went to the Idle Hands the first time when they had their standalone event, and I don't know if there's anything that can be done with it, but the lines were so long.
Very long, yeah.
So long. So I don't know if there's anything that can, that we learned from that event or that they learned.
I think they were blown away last year too, with the response that they got at that event. So I don't think they brought on as much staff as they were hoping to, or anticipated for that matter. So I think they're aware of that, and knowing, you know, this event will be offering a lot more for families, I would imagine, and that's a conversation we'll definitely have with them, and they might be listening right now, something that we could work on as well, because from my understanding and from what I saw, that, I mean, it probably was good, because you could probably get one or two beers. But I think that's definitely something that could be improved upon.
But they were really, I mean, I, I don't think you could get more than one, so.
I think the second event, they were much.
Yes.
They were much better.
But I anticipate that this event will be super popular because of the success of the last event too, so.
Absolutely.
The, the first event, Councilor Dennehy kept cutting the line.
I stood in the mouth.
This is, this is really great, and the Environmental Sustainability Committee talked about it a lot at their last meeting. And we're hoping there's a way to definitely have recycling well labeled, and trash, of course, and maybe even compost, if we could bring over the compost being bin from the Americanale.
That's a good idea, yeah.
And put it near the food area. That might be a way, and maybe Black Earth will come as well and.
Great idea.
And talk about what they do. So, and so if you need any coordination help with that, I think we're, we're willing to help with that too. And then I was just talking to Steve about bike valet, so maybe we can also have a bike valet area.
Oh, great idea.
That's all I have.
And was that where you ride your bike up and someone takes it for you?
Yeah, I mean, maybe the Safe Streets Group, but yeah, they, they, they give you a ticket, you can go enjoy, and you come back and you get your bike. So you don't have to lock it up. We just kind of mark an area out on the Common somewhere.
Oh, okay, cool.
And there'll be a couple of racks, and, yeah. They did it yesterday at Melrose.
The Victorian Fair did it.
Would you need like portable bike racks for that?
Yes.
Okay.
And we know Melrose has some that I asked to borrow, and maybe we can put it on our offer list too. They're not very expensive.
Uh huh.
Yeah, it's something we've talked about for the farmer's market, but that might just be another kind of.
Yeah, great idea.
Good thing. So I'm sure we can work it out. And then, I don't know, Ed might bring this up, but I think you and I are always on the like, have non-alcoholic options.
Oh, yeah.
So we, yeah, we did talk about, is there someone available to do mocktails? It's, it's very difficult to find someone that can do just that.
Even like apple cider or something might be fun.
But I think actually, this, it needs to be got a turn through management. Last time, the second event, Idle Hands had a lot more options than the first.
Yeah.
I think the first was.
After last time, I think that was a concern, and I think the second event, yeah, they had more options.
They were very responsive. I noticed that the second time, it was, I think it was a good offering. So if they, as long as, you know, it's conditioned on that again, that would be great.
And it will be more of like a food court area, so people can get drinks at the other concession type. But yeah, I totally understand that, so.
Councilor McLean?
I'm trying to remember the name. Unfortunately, I can't, but I know at one of the running events I did in Salem, there was a specific non-alcoholic beer vendor there for the Miles Over the Moon race in Salem in July. If I can find out who that is.
Okay.
I'll get you a name.
Thank you.
Great, yeah, I mean, awesome.
That might be an option.
Yeah.
Because that is what they do, so it's not.
It wouldn't be a conflicting interest.
Exactly.
Okay, that'd be great. Awesome.
And just, and just to further clarify, that the event is free, open to everyone. It's the food and drinks that then people would individually pay for. But the, the cornhole tournament, the music, all of that, there's no entrance fee, it's open for everyone.
Yep.
Okay. Just, just wanted, I just wanted to say that out loud. Why don't, why don't we vote on the liquor license, and then we'll move on to the recovery grant? So do I have a motion?
Sure. Move to grant a one-day liquor license for Idle Hands craft ales to sell alcohol at the Wakefield Town Day Event on October 8th, 2022, from 1:00 to 4:00, subject to departmental signups.
Second. Great. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay. And now, would love an update on the Travel and Tourism Recovery Grant.
So it's so great to see you all again. It was nice seeing you at the beginning of August as well. So I'm just here to give you kind of a wrap-up of our Travel and Tourism Recovery Grant. Just to remind you, this does have to be wrapped up by September 30th. We did receive around $38,000 in grant funds to do a marketing campaign tied to tourism with Lake Quanapawett. As you saw, we had some videos that were done by Kevin York Communications, and, thank you, Jen. So there were four videos that, that they produced for us with Motivity Communications, they were the ones that filmed the videos. We have pushed them out into Facebook. There's a number of Facebook ads for both the first one, the trailer, which is the first one there, Shop Live, or Shop Eat Live, and then our second one of the Young Family that we showed to you back in the beginning of August. So those have been pushed out, they're going to markets around Wakefield. And just so you know, the trailer has had over 100,000 views on Facebook, and the Young Family trailer has had around 12,000 views. And so we'll be pushing out the other two over the next couple of weeks as well. So I think that's really exciting. You can also find these videos on our YouTube as well as a, our, our website, sorry, our website. So I think that's really great news. You guys just saw at the beginning of it, and we're going to keep sharing it. As I mentioned before, I'm going to be sharing it with real estate companies, property managers, anyone that wants to market Wakefield as a place to kind of live, locate here, their business. So it's been really successful there. And then also, our signs, if you haven't noticed yet, they're by the lakeside park, kind of wrapping around the North Ave onto Lake Quanapawett Parkway. Right now, we have about 10, and I believe they've already rotated those already with new facts. So we listen to you and put them on private property. And I think it's just an exciting way to get, you know, fun facts about Wakefield out, out there, and then also promote our local businesses, hoping that people after walking the lake will, will make their way there or come back. So we'll be, we'll keep rotating those throughout the fall, just because the grant's over on September 30th. We have these now, we own them, and we can keep using them in different locations as well. So that's, that's exciting.
Yeah, it's a great way. A lot of people from out of town walk the lake, so it's a way for them to understand that we're more than just the lake. They can do some of these other, other things too.
Absolutely. And then the exciting news, this came up quickly, this Saturday, we'll be having our scavenger hunt. It's going to be sunny and 72 degrees, the last time I checked. And so it will be starting at 8:30 at the Veterans Memorial Common. The teams can be up to six individuals, and prizes will be awarded for first, second, and third place teams. And then additional prizes will be awarded for best team spirit and top place in green team, which we took your, you know, recommendation last time. And that's either people that decide not to use their car, and either bike, walk, scoot around town as part of the scavenger hunt. And the whole point of this is to, you know, show, well, one, have people shop local, but also, you know, have people realize that you can buy a lot of the things that you're looking for right here in town. So it's just another way for us to be promoting our, our Shop Local campaign. There's still plenty of time to register, the link is right there. And you'll get a little card where you'll go to each location, and there'll be, there'll be clues, and so you have to guess where, where it is. And then when you get there, you'll get a sticker, and then when you have all the stickers, you'll go check, check back with us at the Veterans Memorial Common, and, and then we'll see if, you know, they got all the locations, and do the best team spirit and the green team. But I think it's going to be a really fun event. We keep pushing it out through, through Facebook, our website. I'm, again, going to be reaching out to some of these new properties as well, to some new residents. But if there's anywhere else that you guys recommend that we should be sharing, we're all ears. I know Kevin York, they're the ones really organizing this, have been pushing on some of the community pages. But it should be really fun. It's going to be a beautiful day, and it's just another way to promote all the, the great things we have here in town. Jen, do you have anything to add about that?
No, just that, you know, all of the stops are actually local businesses. So it's a way to encourage or, you know, encourage people to go stop in somewhere, maybe they have only walked by or didn't know was there. So they're not going to, I'm not giving anything away, but you're not going to be going to the rockery for a clue. You're actually going to be going to a small business that maybe you didn't stop into before, and you'll say, hey, I like this place, and I'll come back.
So it would, would really be great if members of the council, you all have a big following, if you shared this on your Facebook pages and out.
You could have a council team.
Yeah, you have a council team, family team.
And as of this morning, we had 16 teams.
Yeah.
That have already registered. So it's actually pretty good.
Yes.
Pretty cool.
It's going to be a great day.
And open to, to families, right? Children are welcome.
Absolutely, yeah. There's no age, yeah. Anyone can do it.
Right. And do your teams have spaces available?
Do our teams?
No.
I know the, yeah, we know the [inaudible].
Troy, we want to be on your team.
I guess I'll also note the prizes are, again, to all local businesses as well.
Yeah.
So, and the Chamber's been really wonderful in securing that for us as, as well. So they've been a great partner through these two initiatives. And I, just to wrap up the Shop Local campaign with the Mass Office of Travel Tourism, it was all, it was all grant funds that we were able to do all these wonderful projects. And I know we've done videos before, but these don't end here. All the things, all the work that we did, we'll keep sharing them, and something that we'll build upon in the future as well, so.
And I really got to say that Jen, Erin, and Sherry, they really did this. This is, those are the three that did this stuff. So they did a great job on all of these events.
Well, well, thank you so much, all, all three of you, Sherry, as well. You know, I, I think this is what we had hoped, and I love that we got grant money to kind of fund this, but that you guys collaborate and coordinate. And I, I think our town looks amazing all year round, but especially in the fall, as kids are excited to be back in school, and, you know, there were a couple of walks this weekend, and people were just really excited. Hopefully, weather will coordinate, and it sounds great to try something new, to have 16 teams already signed up is great. So, and it is, you know, we always want to find ways to help our local businesses. Councilor Smith-Galvin, and then Councilor Chimes.
So thanks for putting in the green team. That's completely awesome. Can I just also ask, because I think a lot of people will be in cars, and there's going to be, you know, excitement and anxious to get there and to beat everybody else. Can you just reinforce, you know, go the speed limit, follow the rules?
Yes.
I have gotten a few concerns about that. I'm, I'm sure, just if we reiterate it at the beginning, that would be good.
Yeah, we'll have a. Yeah, we'll have a, we're gonna kind of do a welcoming ceremony, if you will.
I figure.
And kind of we'll make sure that we announce that a few times.
Yeah, make them look out for each other.
Yeah, exactly.
Tell them if they get a traffic ticket.
No traffic. No favors there.
Thank you. I guess it's gonna be great. I'm, I'm hoping to be back in time to at least watch some of them.
That, you know, th- this is terrific and I, I just wanted to compliment, I'm excited about the scavenger hunt, but also really excited about the videos, the production quality of the videos. They're like the perfect length where, you know, you're not sitting through kind of a long slog, but they have a lot of real content. They, they put Wakefield in such a great light and I'm glad, you know, Erin, that you mentioned that this is something that we're gonna be able to use in the future. I mean, I'm assuming we own the intellectual property to the videos. Uh, and so the fact that, you know, our ability to kind of push those out and our ability to use those as a tool to promote Wakefield doesn't end on, on the thirtieth is terrific. So I just really appreciate all the work that went into this. This is terrific.
And they're real people. They're real residents.
Yeah.
They're not actors.
Yeah.
The, the family is my neighbors and so now every time they, I see them, I ask for their autograph.
They were great.
The children, Stella and Jackson, uh, love it. Evan's not so much. I tell them that they are now celebrities, which is great, so. And they're actually, you know, the story that Steve and I have talked about a long time. They didn't, they didn't grow up here. They moved here because it was close to their jobs after, you know, and they're choosing to raise their families here and really active in town. And I, I love that, that, that's, you know, what makes Wakefield so special. Anyone else? Okay. Oh, Anthony?
Um, thank you. This is exciting and fun. Um, can we take those signs for October eighth and put them on the Common, the fun facts about Wakefield?
Yeah.
Sure.
Pretty good.
I wanna learn some fun facts about Wakefield.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and then we'll also put the QR, QR board that we updated with the Boys and Girls Club in the Chamber. Uh, so after the scavenger hunt, people, if they wanna stay in town and grab something to eat, they can just do the QR code as well as the event too. Um, we'll have that there. Um, you know, if people wanna go somewhere after the event to grab some food.
Yes. Voting will be open that day too.
Yeah, this is exciting. It's very, it's a great job. Thank you.
Should be good.
Thank you to everyone that's worked on this, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thanks so much.
Okay, back to item seven, appointments. Um, Steve, remind me, we have to do each individually?
Um, you could, or you could do them all in, in one vote if you wanted.
I think that would be great. So could I have them, if I'm allowed to do that, could we have a motion?
Absolutely.
For appointments?
Sure. Um, I'll, uh, make a motion to, uh, advertise for, uh, voting, uh, members of the Permanent Building Committee, uh, Sweetser Lecture Advisory Committee, Human Rights Commission, Housing Authority, uh, and Fence Viewing Committee as, uh, laid out in the agenda. I'm gonna come back to give it to you.
Yep, that's great.
Uh, second.
Great. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye, thank you, unanimous, Sherry. And we had a couple from our last meeting, so I'm assuming you're just gonna promote these, advertise them all at the same time?
Yes, yes.
Perfect.
All right. Um, I'll make a motion to, uh, appoint Ashley Carter as the Student Representative to the Human Rights Commission with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Uh, second.
Uh, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye, unanimous. Great.
Uh, and finally, uh, make a motion to advertise for Special Counsel for the Wakefield Memorial High School Project for a term through project completion.
Second.
Great. And discussion, Steve, can you just explain that a little bit?
Uh, sure. Like we've, um, done with almost every major, um, public, uh, construction project. Uh, we do, uh, we will, um, need to get, um, approval from either the zoning board, Conservation Commission, um, perhaps Planning Board, depending on what happens. And really, um, Town Council, Town Council, Mullen represents the board, does not represent the project. So this would be advertising, just like we did for the Public Safety Building, to have a, um, an attorney who will be a special municipal employee, which will allow that attorney to continue his practice and continue, um, making his, uh, living in front of other boards, uh, her other boards. Um, because we expect this attorney to, um, represent the town pro bono, like, uh, we've had in the other projects. And that allows, uh, that attorney to keep their living and for us to get what we need, um, to make sure we get all the regulatory items done correctly.
Great. Um, uh, um, Council Chimes?
Uh, just, just a quick question. So I'm assuming that the, the special employees only for representing this project in front of town boards, anything that goes to an outside entity? And I'm thinking specifically some of the discussion around the alignment of Hemlock Road and any legal representation that we have to do. I'm assuming anything that we do outside of town would still be, Mr. Mullen?
Yes. Yeah. Hemlock Road, we do, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Aye, unanimous, Sherry, seven zero. Great. Item eight licenses. Um, so item eight A. Um, we have a request for a one-day liquor license for a company event at wind supply of Wakefield on September fifteenth, from four to seven-thirty, subject to the requirement, required department sign-offs. Um, do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, seven zero, Sherry. Um, we did be already, item eight C, a request for a one-day liquor license for the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield to sell alcohol at an event at the Maricall Civic Center on February fourth. This is early, uh, February fourth, twenty twenty-three, from seven PM until eleven PM, subject to the required department sign-offs.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Great. Any discussion other than mine? This is early. Uh, great. All in favor? Say aye, seven zero. Thank you. Um, item nine, regular town meeting. So we are setting the date, um, for our regular town meeting set for Saturday, November nineteenth, um, twenty twenty-two. It will be at the Galvin Middle School, um, for a Saturday. Do we have to do each of these individually, Steve?
I would, yes, Madam Chair.
So do I have a motion to set the date for regular town meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Just a quick question. Do we need to set the start time as well?
I, I think it would be preferable, nine AM.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So I'll amend my motion to, uh, move to, uh, set the regular town meeting for the November nineteenth, starting at nine AM at the Galvin.
Great. And seconded by Council, uh, Smith Galvin. Um, any discussion? Uh, great. All, uh, let's, all in favor? Aye, unanimous. Thank you. Um, motion to open the warrant?
So moved, uh, to open the warrant for September twelfth.
Second.
Great. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Great, unanimous. And then, um, a motion to close the warrant on October twenty-first.
Uh, so moved at twelve PM.
Uh, second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye. Great. Um, item ten, the presentation of bond bids. I'm going to go to Steve.
This is my, this is why I came tonight. So I thought, um, it, as the, um, as the council knows, um, you know, we, we had a number of projects that we did need to, um, go out to bid for, for bonding, so we could fund them. We, it's kind of like getting a mortgage or a construction loan on your house. So let me give you a little bit of the, um, history of how this does happen. Um, and then, um, we'll get to the actual bids, uh, which actually ended out being very good, um, excellent, actually. So it really is a very interesting process. So what happens whenever we, whenever we go out for bonds is that we actually have, it's called a surveillance call. And it's a surveillance call with the rating agencies, which is, you know, here Moody's, in our case, it's Standard and Poor's, which is a Wall Street, you know, credit rating agency that really rates the town. It's like giving the town its credit report. And, you know, we've gone through a number of these over the years and, um, every time we've gone out, actually. Um, and I'm very nervous every time we go, um, because it really has a big effect on the community on, because the better our rating, the better our interest rate will be, the lower it'll be. And that means that we will, um, taxpayers will pay less money and we'll get a project for, for less. So I do wanna thank, um, my entire financial team, um, starting with Kevin Gil, our town accountant, John McCarthy, our treasurer, uh, Victor Santinello, our assessor, um, Kathy Kelly, our tax collector, and Joe Conway, our DPW director, who sat in on these because there was, one of them was for the water tower and for drainage. So he might have some technical expertise that might be, um, asked. And also, uh, our team at Hilltop Security. Um, Hilltop is the company that we use to help us with our bonds. And, um, we've seen them, uh, many times at the MMA Conference and Conventions and they're really top shelf. And, uh, they really handle a lot of the, um, a lot of the communities in the area. They handled Stonem recently on their high school. They handled vocational schools. So they're well-known in the area and very respective and respected and they do a great job for us. So we spend a lot of time, uh, making sure all our financial information is in order and, you know, anticipating a lot of questions from the bond agencies and that does happen. But, um, what was curious about this year is that this bond surveillance, um, call was not just about the numbers. I mean, in the past, it's really been looking at our balance sheet. Um, how are you funded on your OPEB? Are you funding OPEB? Um, do you have a financial policy? Do you have an investment policy? Uh, which is all things that we have. Um, how's your free cash? Do you, um, have a forecast? Do you have a capital plan? And they've always looked at those items. And so it's been really pretty numbers or, uh, numbers-driven. This year, for the first time, they really asked questions beyond what the numbers were on the balance sheet or on our budget, but where they were going. So they were very, um, interested in the fact that, you know, the bulk of our borrowing was for the Public Safety Building. And they were very interested in the why. Well, why are you borrowing, why are you borrowing for Public Safety Building? And the real, the whole talk there was really about, you know, we find that the way the building is set up now really is not conducive to giving high-quality service to the community, particularly in the area of mental health. And we kind of talked about that in a way tonight when the fire department was here. A lot of those calls are mental health calls. Police are involved in them too. So I found that very interesting, that there was a lot of discussion about that. And the three, uh, people on the committee for S and P actually knew a little bit about Wakefield's history in this area. And they said, um, they said, uh, to me, weren't you one of the first communities to have, um, the CIT, the Counselor in Training Program? I said, yes, we were. Weren't you? And, and I said, yes, and we funded that in our budgets. We've actually expanded the hours. We've gone on to have a recovery coach and things like that. They were really very interested in that, in that. So I thought that was very interesting. Um, the other area they were very in, interested in was where we were with, uh, becoming a green community. So, um, we had a lot of discussion about that and they were actually very interested in the fact that not only were we going down that path. We talked about that with the new high school, which will be coming to them later on, which they really liked. But we also talked about the first, um, tax increment financing, um, program that we did was for a company that was making bad, diodes for batteries for cars that were, you know, a green, a green industry. So they're very interested in that. I was, I was really a little bit surprised that that's what they talked about. Um, and that was a lot of it. So it's kind of, uh, interesting where it's changed, how, how the, um, how the way that you're judging a community. It's not just about the numbers, but it's about the quality of life and sustainability. So I thought that was kind of interesting to share, uh, with the, with the council. They also were interested in where we were with our ARPA funds. And I know we're gonna have a discussion about this next week, but they were very, um, they, they liked the fact that we did use some ARPA funds to, um, kind of seed some programs. And we've talked about that here in a town meeting. Uh, we used some ARPA funds for learning loss that was suffered during COVID, although some of those will be sunsetted next year. Um, but we also were saving the bulk of it for some really kind of, we thought transformative projects, as we've talked about. So I thought, I thought that whole thing went very well. We're a triple A bond-rated community, um, going into the meeting, so I had nowhere to go but down. So, uh, so that was on September first. Have to wait a week. That's okay. I don't sleep well anyway. So anyways, um, as I shared with the board a week later, um, I've gotta say that my team all said, Steve, this, we, we did great. This is, this is a great presentation. It's gonna be fine, but I don't believe it till I get it. So we did, um, maintain our triple A bond rating. So that is huge for the community and it's a great testament to the work that this council has done, Finance Committee has done, Town Meeting has done, and, uh, your financial team has done so. I wanna thank all those people again. The only thing that I'm a little bit, I won't say upset, a little bit, uh, perturbed about is that the, um, climate has changed where the interest rates are. Um, and the yield curve is flat, which, um, is kind of very interesting to me, cause I'm an economist at heart, is that really borrowing for a longer, borrowing for shorter term should be much cheaper than borrowing for a longer term. But when, with the flat curve, they're, they're, they're almost the same. So that's indicative of what we're gonna talk about tonight. But that's fine. So essentially, we had two bid categories. Um, and again, all of these items are voted at a town meeting. All were, uh, vetted through the Finance Committee and through the Town Council and have already been really accounted for in our debt schedule. We know they're coming when we went forward. Um, so we did borrow, uh, fourteen million over twenty-five years. Ten point one million of that was for the Public Safety Building. Um, and that came in two votes, as we may remember, uh, seven point six million, then we had to go back to two point five because of the delay. Three million was for the water tower, our hundred-year-old water tower. They were actually, actually very interested in that. It was a hundred years old. I think that really caught them because the three of their ages together did not add up to a hundred years old, I will tell you, um, in my opinion. Um, and that, that project, you may remember, is more than three million dollars, probably around four and a half, five million dollars. But we can get the difference at zero interest rate from the MWRA. So I'll take it zero interest rate anyway, any, any. And nine hundred thousand is for drainage. So we went out to bid on that and we actually received seven, um, entities that bid on that portion of this, which was really excellent. And it really showed that there is interest in investing in Wakefield. And the low bid is Morgan Stanley, which has a net interest cost of the town of three point six five two percent. Which is great when you look at what you'd get for your mortgage today, if you were going out. But, um, really is a great and indicative of the triple A bond rating. Three point six five two. And, um, that's the net interest cost. Um, and the way that bonds work is that it's kind of opposite. When you went for a mortgage on your house, you might, you might've paid points. In bond financing, actually, they pay you points, so they pay, it's called a premium. So the town gets a premium, in this case, of eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, which will go all towards the debt service, because we end up actually borrowing less, less. So the net interest cost for the, um, bonds, which are twenty-five years, are three point six five two percent. There was another portion that we did too, and that was bands, or they're called bond anticipation notes. And you really do this on a short-term basis when we kind of don't know exactly what's gonna happen with something. And we had two bands that we went out for. Um, one was two million doll, two million sixty-five thousand dollars, and that was for the Butler Rav property. And that is taxable. And when I say taxable, what that means is that it's taxable to the investor, not taxable to the town. So whoever's bidding on that will have to pay taxes on their interest. So that's why that rate is a little bit higher, three point nine eight eight percent, still very good. Um, and the reason why we're banned, we're going for the bond anticipation note, hopefully, within the next, you know, hopefully I'm gonna be back here in a couple of months and say, hey, let's go out and see what we can do as a council to, you know, move this forward. And we've talked about that, you know, for whatever purpose prob, maybe housing, whatever. Get that off the books to something, uh, permanent. Um, the other portion of tax-exempt bands was on the high school. And it was a little over a million and a half, um, which was for the feasibility, which was for the, um, feasibility study on the high school. The reason why that's a ban is because we hope to roll that in to the entire project later on, just like we did with the Galvin. And the other, um, portion is the Greenwood Roof. You may recall that we did do the Greenwood Roof. It was about a million-dollar project. Um, it was under the, um, Emergency Repair Program at the SBA, which we actually got fifty percent, about forty-nine, fifty percent reimbursement for. This is the final amount left that hasn't gone through the final audit, so I don't actually know what we need to borrow. But I think it's good. It's hundred thirty-nine thousand. Put it into the new band and maybe next year I'll come back and say, maybe we use free cash and we don't do it, or maybe we roll it into something else. So all in. So all in all, I'm very happy with where we, where we ended up. I wish that the national market was a little bit lower, but in today's day, to get, you know, $14 million worth of bonds of 3.652% and the others right around 3, although the taxability was a little bit on the other, on Butler Rav, was all in all, a pretty good day. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have, Madam Chair.
Yes, and I just want to say thank you, Steve. I think you glossed over you and your team getting that AAA bond rating again, so thank you for all your work on that. It's a big achievement, and how far we've come since 2008, as Ann remembers. So any questions first, Counselor Tynes?
Well, first of all, just to echo the thank you, Steve, both to you and the entire financial team. I mean, I know there's a lot of work that goes into preparing for the surveillance meeting. It's not something you just kind of throw together and wing it at, for obvious reasons. And so, just really tremendously grateful to you and to your team, to the Finance Committee, and everyone else who was involved. I do have a question, but I just want to start with an observation, because I do think it's interesting that the focus of the meeting was so much on, basically, the investments we've made in the community, whether it's, you know, thinking about the behavioral health and substance use needs in the community, sustainability, the fact that we've talked about using ARPA to fund infrastructure in some of these, I think, really kind of game-changing investments in building up capabilities. And so, I just, you know, we obviously have some big decisions ahead as a town, particularly the new high school, and I, I think that our experience with the bond ratings show that there's value in demonstrating that as a community, we invest back in Wakefield, and that we think ahead, and that we're not just planning for today, but we're planning for 10 years from now, 20 years from now, 50 years from now. And I think the surveillance meeting was a good example of that, and the way that your team handled that. That was a long-winded preamble, but just one quick question. So do we have a sense as to, had our bond rating declined, what the impact would have been on the, on the interest rates?
I, I did anticipate that that question would be asked by the council. And I did ask them, and if we had gone down one tick, the difference was about $485,000.
So that's meaningful. I mean, that's, that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Great. Well, thank you again.
It's very good. And that's one thought, that's, that's entire amount, that's not every year, that's the entire amount, so. But it is, it is, I'm very, you know, grateful to the entire team for that, and they do work very hard, and they pulled up with my OCD on going through this whole thing with them, so.
It's wonderful. It pays off. Counselor Dabrowski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Great job, Stephen team, certainly. I mean, that's, that's, that's real money savings, and that can't, we can't underscore that enough. I know you said that it was a bit of a different process, or at least the priorities seem to be, have shifted a little bit this year. Is there some kind of criteria going forward? Not to say you studied to the test, but, you know, do you have a sense of where you...
I still think they will, you know, at the end of the day, they are a credit rating agency. So, I mean, all of the, you know, we have, you know, I know all the questions that have been asked before, right? So we'll still prepare for those. You know, they're gonna, they're gonna want to know, you know, how are you funding your, your OPEB, your, our health insurance liability going forward? That's, that's a real number that they can look at, right? How are you funding your pension? How are your investments doing? Are you very conservative, which we are, all mass-rated investments? Do you have multi-year forecasts? Yes, we do. Do you have a multi-year capital plan? Yes, we do. Not everybody has that, everyone should, but not everybody does. Do you have a financial policy? And we do. But I do think that going forward, I think that we're, we're really following two great paths here, is that, you know, we're, we're taking care of the, the financial, you know, items there, but we're also spending our money behind the balance sheet in a way that is promoting a better quality of life, and really looking at these, these items. So I think that, that's a sense that I got, there's gonna be more questions like that. They were thrilled that, actually, they were thrilled that there was a lot of housing going on, and then they'd done their homework, they had looked at that. I mean, they were thrilled that we were doing, focusing on transit-oriented development. I mean, those are things that they brought up, which is, you know, things that we have done. So it was really eye-opening for me, there wasn't a lot of talk, as much talk about, well, geez, your meals tax went up 10% last year, but you think it's gonna go up 15% next year, or what do you think's gonna happen? They were, they were talking what's behind those numbers. So it was an interesting dynamic for me. But I, I think we have to prepare for both.
Yeah.
And everything.
Makes sense.
Which we'll do probably in the, in March, when we maybe have the high school coming forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Steve? And do we have to take a vote, an approval vote?
Yes, we do. Now, this is a lot of words, so if you'd like it, I can read this. I think that it's technical that we can read this into the record, I think it's better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I am looking at our Town Council, and he's nodding along, so...
We can't be, we can't be faulted for not. And, and for the public, when you hear this, you're gonna hear a lot of different amounts and different numbers, and it's gonna be like a lot of, I'm gonna say 5% or what have you, and Steve just told us it was, you know, 3.652. That's because you've got to take the premium interest off, and the way that these bonds work is that, you know, different investors within that, you know, the Morgan Stanley family are buying different chunks. So that's really what we're kind of approving here, so hopefully, my voice will, will carry this, okay?
If you need to hand it off, I'll need a break.
Do you want somebody else to read it?
Like first grade, I can do it. That the sale of one of 13,115,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2022 bonds of the town dated September 21, 2022, the bonds to Morgan Stanley &amp; Company LLC at the price of $14,102,93.58, and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable in September 15 of the year, in the principal amounts, and bear interest at the respective rates as follows. 2,023, 510,000, 5%. 2,024, 515,000, 5%. 2,025, 520,000, 5%. 2,026, 520,000, 5%. 2,027, 525,000, 5%. 2,028, 530,000, 5%. 2,029, 540,000, 5%. 2,030, 545,000, 5%. 2,031, 550,000, 5%. 2,032, 555,000, 5%. 2,033, 565,000, 5%. 2,034, 570,000, 5%. 2,035, 580,000, 5%. 2,036, 585,000, 5%. 2,037, 595,000, 5%. 2,038, 600,000, 4%. 2,039, 605,000, 4%. 2,040, 610,000, 4%. 2,047, 3,095,000, 4%. Further voted that the bonds maturing on September 15, 2047, the term bond shall be subject to mandatory redemption, redemption and mature as follows. 2,043, 370, 370,000. 2,044, 370,000. 2,045, 370,000. 2,046, 370,000. 2,047, 370,000. Further voted to approve the sale of 2,65,004% general obligation bond anticipation note Series A, subject to federal Massachusetts income taxation. The Series A note of the town dated September 22, 2022, and payable September 22, 2023, to Fidelity Capital Markets, a Division of National Financial Services, Inc., at par and approved interest plus a premium of $227.15. Further voted to approve the sale of $1,679,620, 4% general obligation bond anticipation note Series B. The Series B note, and together with the Series A note, the notes of the town dated September 22, 2022, and payable September 22, 2023, to Piper Sandler &amp; Company, at par and accrued interest plus a premium of $15,771.63. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated August 11, 2022, and a final official statement dated September 7, 2022. The official statement, each in such form, may be approved by the town treasurer, being hereby ratified, confirmed, approved and adopted. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of notes, the preparation and distribution of notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated September 6, 2022, and a final official statement dated September 7, 2022. Each in said form, as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby ratified, confirmed, approved and adopted. Further voted that the bond shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as are set forward in the official statement. Further voted that the town treasurer and the town council be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver continuing significant events, disclosure, undertakings and compliance with SEC Rule 15C-12 in such forms as may be approved by bond council of the town, which indications shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds and note as applicable for the benefit of the holders of the bonds and notes from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish a, to establish post-insurance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as a town treasurer and bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to view and update such procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds and notes, and to comply with relevant security laws. Further voted that any certificates or documents relating to the bonds and the notes, collectively the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each which shall be regarded as an original, and all of which shall constitute one and the same document, delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail, in a PDF file, or any other electronic transmission, shall be as effective as delivery of manually-executed counterpart signatures to such document, and electronic signatures on any document shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents, and all that is thereto having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further voted that each member of the town council, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take away any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts or other documents, as may be determined by them or any of them, to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
So moved.
Seconded.
Like, that's adequate. Should we, should we ask Counselor Smith-Galvin to recite it in Spanish?
I wouldn't give a...
Any questions or discussion? Thank you, Steve, for reading that. All in favor? Say aye, unanimous, thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you, Madam Chair, members of the council.
Okay, item 11, donations.
All right, Madam Chair, move to accept and expend a gift or gifts in the amount of $1,510 to the library from various donors with sincere thanks.
Second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, 7-0.
All right, move to accept and expend a gift or gifts in the amount of $60 to the youth council with, from various donors with thanks.
Second. Great. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye, 7-0. Thank you. Item 12, warrants. I believe I go to Counselor Vincent for an update on signing of warrants.
Actually, start with me for A.
I didn't handle the warrants in Section A.
I will go to Counselor, my mistake, Counselor Tynes.
So my swan song on the warrants. So on August 17, I did sign the last remaining warrants for fiscal year 2022, warrants 51, 52, 52A, 53, 54, and 55 and 56, total of $8.1 million, plus payroll expenses, with details in the packet.
Great, thank you. And warrants, item 12B.
Now I see why Jonathan was so enthused to have me take the warrants over. I did sign warrants 1, 2, 4, 5 and 6. There was no warrant 3 for July 19, 2022, that was a $0 figure. Most of these warrants, or many of these warrants, because it's the beginning of the fiscal year, were general insurance, workman's comp and retirement payments, they included bond payments as well as public safety construction payments. The treasurer paid our existing bonds, as well as taxes and Medicare, and the warrant, the warrants also included payments made by the gas and light for power, as well as the monthly health insurance payments. I think it's also significant to note that all of these are on the town's website, so anybody can access all these payments through the open checkbook feature. And the only other comment I wanted to make, because it was my first time going through this, I hearken back to my Inspector General experience in the Navy, and I am very meticulous, and I met with Mr. Gill in his office, and I looked at all the supporting documentation that he gave me, that was a couple hundred pages, and then he had huge stacks in his office that he offered for me to go through. I was incredibly impressed with the professionalism and with the, the system that's put in place for the different departments in going through their bills and, and putting together their packages to, to the town accountant, as well as what the town, Mr. Gill and his staff does in preparing these warrants. This town is in really good stead, in my opinion, with having the kind of professionalism that he exhibited to me when I met with him. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for taking that on, Counselor. I know it's a lot of work, so much appreciated, and echoing all that you say about Stephen and his team. Item 13, announcements. Counselor Tynes?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. First, I just wanted to start out, you know, since yesterday was the 21st anniversary of September 11, just wanted to acknowledge the day and commemorate, you know, I think the very, you know, real impact that that had on everyone's lives, you know, and a lot of people in our community as well. You know, certainly a less, you know, kind of recognized anniversary this year is the 21st than last year, but something that still is a day that, you know, is, you know, dear to the heart of, of many of us. It was a little incongruous, but I think in a good way. It was, it was nice to have the anniversary fall on a weekend where we had a lot of things to celebrate in Wakefield, and I think it just was a reflection on sort of how important it is to embrace the things that, you know, we do in our community, that really do have, have meaning and are special to the lives of folks in Wakefield. And so, you know, to that end, it was great to spend part of the weekend celebrating with Temple Emmanuel on their 75th anniversary. I know a number of us were there, and both the temple and really all of the congregations in Wakefield just add so much to our community life, and it was incredibly uplifting to be there yesterday, particularly on the September 11 anniversary. I also did want to take a moment just to congratulate Wakefield's sports team. So folks may have seen in the item a couple of weeks ago, that Wakefield actually finished seventh in the Boston Globe's Dalton Awards. The Dalton Awards basically is an aggregate score for all of the sports teams' records across three seasons, fall, winter and spring. Wakefield's win a combined 174, 120 and 10, which is a 57% win percentage, which, which is really incredible, and, you know, when you think about some of the powerhouse districts that are, you know, counted in the, in that, including some, you know, some private high schools that really do recruit a lot of athletes. I mean, that says a lot about our athletic programs and the great work that Brendan Kent and everyone in the athletic department does. So just wanted to acknowledge that, and finally, just a thank you to Town Clerk Sheeran, her staff and all the poll workers for a successful primary day last week.
That's great. Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Sure. First, I am very happy to say, and following up on the bond discussion, that the Green Community's application, after probably two solid years of work, has finally been submitted.
That's great.
We are working with the Department of Energy Resources on some follow-up questions, and when I say we, it's like the royal we, Jen Calle is really taking the lead on that and working with the departments and Steve to make sure that we get them all the information that they need. So I'm very hopeful that we will have a, you know, fingers crossed, a positive response before the end of the year, and join the 300 or so other communities that are already green, and then really get some grant funding and work towards our, our energy reduction goals. So that's exciting. Other than that, couple of upcoming events this Wednesday, I know, is the community dinner at Most Blessed Sacrament. There's a number of community dinners happening monthly in Wakefield every month. I know they, they are serving warm meals, and if anybody needs food, or just kind of fellowship, these are great opportunities. these are great opportunities. Most Blessed Sacrament is 5:00 on Wednesdays, the second Wednesdays of the month. And the Linden Tree, I'm super excited to say, is back. The Linden Tree Coffee House Folk Music has been remote for a number, really since the beginning of COVID, I guess. And they returned to their schedule in person on September 24. So check that out if you love music. And I believe October 1 is the Wave. Somebody may know more about that. The 5K on October 1 for Wave, which I think is a mystic runner. It's a Saturday, October 1. So walk, run, roll, you know, anything. Great cause. It's going to be, it always is a good race.
Great, thank you. Counselor Tenny?
Yes, I just want to say is that in our next meeting, I've had some people asking me about historical properties and what's the maintenance plan and how, what shape are they in? And I brought that to the attention of Counselor Butt and Administrator Steve Mayo. And Nancy Bertrand is going to be here from the Historical Commission. So that'll be great. And we're going to make that an annual, an annual update. So thank you for taking care of that.
Thank you.
And I want to, and I do want to say is that I think that Election Day went really well. It was a flawless execution from early voting. Early voting, I think, went really well, and then Election Day as well. So that was good to see.
Counselor Dabrowski?
Despite the weather. Counselor Butt and I sure have those memories of 2017 and the torrential rains, I think, every Saturday leading up to the election and then the election itself felt like. I just wanted to congratulate Ann Hadley and the Angel Fund. The Walk of Hope for ALS was this past Saturday, and it was a tremendous success. It was great to see so many folks come out. I know I was talking with Town Administrator Steve Mayo. We were there just observing how many people were there, how many families were there. Multigenerational, you know, families were there in support of a loved one either who's currently suffering with ALS or who has passed. And it was just really touching to hear the stories. And I was really surprised to hear two things. One, how many people were there who had lost a loved one at a young age? And, you know, oftentimes, people think about a lot of different diseases as older folks, and it impacts so many young folks. And so I think that was really eye-opening. And the other piece was how close we are. You know, we're like on the cusp. I kept hearing FDA approvals. Once we get some FDA approvals, there's a lot of really great treatments that are out there, and that's encouraging. And it obviously hits personal for this council, you know, having lost, you know, Peter May last year. And so we think about him, this, you know, the one-year anniversary of his passing. And we just saw what happened with him. And for so many people, the diagnosis can come so late because it's almost a diagnosis of exclusion in a lot of cases where it's not an easy thing for people to be able to recognize or medical professionals to identify straight on. So, you know, just hope and pray that the work continues as it does. Great research going on. But Ann Hadley has been just unwavering in her support. And she has done a phenomenal job with the Angel Fund. And it's made an impact and will continue to. So I was just proud to be there for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other updates from this end? Any other updates from this end?
I actually have a couple.
Yeah?
I've talked enough today. Lieutenant Anderson from our police department will graduate from the FBI tomorrow. This is a great program, and we really are blessed to have our entire leadership team there as FBI-trained and graduates there. So Lieutenant Anderson is going to graduate tomorrow. He's going to take three days off. And then I'll be hitting him Monday morning with a bunch of items that I've been waiting for. So maybe Tuesday morning. But congratulations to Lieutenant Anderson. A great, great officer. And I'm sure he'll bring back what he's learned, and that will really help the community and make our police department, which is fabulous, that much better. The only other thing I have is that the Citizenship Foundation Golf Tournament is on the 20th. I think it's on the 20th, a week from Monday. Maybe it's the 19th, on the 19th. And Jean and I will be golfing in it. So I will give you the reports on that, on how that worked out.
That's great. Thank you for sharing, Steve. Just, everyone talked about everything I wanted to talk about, so I'm not going to be repetitive. The one thing I just want to mention is that the orange line is still under construction. Last I heard, they were 60% complete. So it looks like they're on schedule to fix it. I know it's been a little bit of a process for people commuting in. I took the commuter rail last week, and it was fuller than it had been since all through COVID. But just a little bit of patience. And if you actually, we were given from our delegation some commuter passes. So if you need any, please reach out to Steve's office, and we can help out in this time when the orange line isn't running, and you can take the commuter rail instead. So just wanted to talk about that. Okay.